Good morning, excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2023 School Board Meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a presentation by the Greenville Elementary School students. We're excited to have you here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for this opportunity for Greenville Elementary School students to come and share what they have been practicing for past few weeks to get ready for this opportunity. And they are excited. They have been doing a great job. And so, we're going to start out with a spirited song and then we're going to go with something that is a little bit technical. We're going to allow our students to have an opportunity to introduce themselves really quick. We're going to start with the video.
But Ryan, we can't see their faces. They're talking to you all. Turn them around.
So will you go first, tell your name and question?
My name is Delilah.
Honey?
My name is Money Paul and I'm in sixth grade.
Oh, really?
My name is Jamal Turner and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Ellie Ferguson and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Amaya Tyler and I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Sarai As and I'm in corporate.
My name is Yama Corby and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Yama Corby and I'm in third grade.
My name is Lily Lo and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Sundal and I'm in eighth grade.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, look at so bright like what you see. Pride is a model, pride as we can be. Great attitudes I show and friendships are growing. We're really doing all we can to make our school the best around the world. After doing its greatest and our best will be any challenge we can stand to test. So when the schools are all prepared and one that needs to rest, we can have area of G E A. Go! Everybody's got a thing, but some don't know how to handle it. Always screaming out in vain, just taking a think now we're having. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, mama. Cause I'll be standing on the side when you check it out. They say it's hard to fly to track and that's when it goes all the places. But just don't feel too bad when you get full on smile and faces. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, mama. Cause I'll be standing on the side when you check it out. When you get home. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing. Everybody needs a change, a change, a change that's new. But you're the only one you see, the change that can take us through. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, mama. Cause I'll be standing on the side when you check it out. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, mama. Cause I'll be standing on the side when you check it out. When you get home. Don't you worry about a thing. 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 Don't you worry about a thing.
Thank you very much.
Great job, great job. Wonderful. Thank you.
I think we have some future stars there. Next, we have a presentat- uh, the Beta Club Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Orelli Serrano and I'm the Vice President of the Madison County High School Beta Club. From January 27 to 29, we competed at the Beta Club State Convention in Orlando, Florida. Our group of 16 members in attendance won the Gold Key Award, which means we had a growth in convention attendance. We competed in nine different categories and three- and three of those, we placed in those categories. Because of that accomplishment, we now qualify to compete at the National Beta Club Convention in Louisville, Kentucky this June. I'm going to ask those members who compete in individual contests to introduce themselves and their category. I competed in the online Spanish test.
I'm Lucy Frakes and I competed in speech.
I'm Bethany Glover and I competed in the visual arts category.
A big thank you to Superintendent Joseph and Mrs. Robin Hill and our fellow board members for letting us go to state convention and represent Madison County, as well as letting us be here today at this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You represented Madison County High School very well and we're proud of you.
Hi, I'm Janice Iran.
And I'm Avril Maps.
My group competed in the book battle for the state convention and we placed state, I mean, we placed second. To compete, we were required to read 12 novels. Over the Christmas break, we returned to school to take a timed online test in which we were judged on both the accuracy of the questions that we completed and the time that we completed them. We will compete again at the national convention in Louisville, Kentucky.
And you'll bring it home first place?
Hopefully.
Yes, that's.
Did y'all hear how many books I read?
Yes.
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 Our goal is first place.
That's okay. You will be bringing home first place. You believe? You can do it.
Thank you, ladies.
I read, I can read a novel, babe.
Good evening. My name is Haley Glavich and I play the alto sax.
My name is James Dice and I play the trumpet.
My name is Raoul Dorte Santiago and I play the alto sax.
We competed as a trio in the state instrumentalist solo duo trio and placed third in the state. We performed St. Louis Blues by W.C. Handy, which in turn qualified us for the National Beta Convention in Kentucky. Although we placed third with this piece, we will be changing it in the hopes of placing higher at the National Beta Convention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brianne Rassason and this is the service learning project which and was showcased at convention and our whole group worked on it. This board was a way to communicate what our chapter has done and plans to do in during this year. We focused on the clothes closet, which is in the middle, but we also showed our current and future community service projects. We are beginning the Beta Buddies with the Lake Park of Madison Nursing Home. We are installing a bookshelf in the nursing home and our first project would be to give residents Valentine's Day cards and candy. Our other service projects are maintaining the updated Little Free Libraries around the county to get out literature and encourage reading. We are partnering, partnering with HOSA to do a blood drive in April in honor of Mrs. Monica Dyke and we also plan to reinstate our recycling program. Although our board didn't place, it was still an awesome experience and an opportunity to show how, how great our chapter is.
Good evening. My name is Avril Maps and I'm the Secretary of our Beta Club. In October, my fellow officers and I attended the Regional Leadership Summit located in La Grange, Georgia. We competed in the project proposal where we showcased our campus clothes closet. We've been working on the clothes closet since the beginning of the school year when we decided to relocate it. We've installed racks, accepted many donations, hung clothing, and most importantly, we have given clothes, shoes, jackets, backpacks, and personal hygiene items to students, staff, and community members. At the leadership summit, we were named a national qualifier and outstanding leaders. We will compete in Lewisville, Kentucky over the summer. My group members are Zariel McDaniel, Anna Eberston, and Orelli Serrano.
My name is Harley Davis. At the Regional Leadership Summit, our group competed in the Collaboration Connection. My group members were Hopeorn, Anasia Robinson, and Karen Connor Ferguson. We were given a problem to solve in a minute. We were judged on how well we worked together and how successfully we solved the problem. Because of our performance, we became a national qualifier and will compete in Kentucky. I also interviewed for a leadership position and was the first person from MCHS to ever interview for a leadership spot.
Congratulations.
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
I'm pretty good, I'm pretty good. I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to let us come out here and talk to y'all. Hold on, let me give you passwords. Okay. My name is Ian Rogers and our robotics team placed first in state anonymous progress and nationals.
I'm Gosse Hill.
I'm Richard Ramirez.
And I'm Jones Shirley Sanchez.
Okay. And with teamwork plus some trial and error, we designed a program, constructed and implemented our robot to address the Beta Club Robotics Challenge, Search, Rescue, and Retrieve. We, we decided to focus on the Chipotle Slab Shell, an endangered species of muscle only found in the Chipotle River in the shape of a yellow foam disc. The Autobot was designed to pick up a circular slab shell in the 12 by 12 area. Without further ado, this is the state robot Autobot.
Have you got your padding on it yet?
Does he do laundry?
So you're not directing, is that right?
Right. And I want to say that theirs was the only one in their competition that was autonomous. All the others were remote controlled. So that was awesome.
Congratulations.
They, they actually have already made some changes since we got back. Instead of the, the dark colored disc, they had squares before cubes and they, they've improved upon that. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just wanted to tell you thank you again for letting us go. We're looking forward to nationals. You would have been so proud of these guys, not just because they won, but just how they conducted themselves. I've been on lots of trips in my 100 years of teaching and this was one of the best, one of the best.
Seems like you have some protectors.
And I also want to thank Robin, of course, for all of her help, Ms. Shirley for her help, our awesome chaperones, Ms. Goodge, who was, this is because of Ms. Goodge right here. Ms. Michelle was our amazing chaperone. Jonas's dad was an amazing chaperone. Ms. Avril, our school bus driver, was wonderful and we just had a, we had a great, oh, yes. So before the trip, I had talked to Art Smith, a former student at North Florida Junior College when we were there, Junior College. And of course, if you know anything about Art, he came from nothing in Hamilton County, but he has a heart for small town kids. And I just asked him, Art, could you reserve us a table for 21 at his restaurant in home in Disney Springs? And he's done that for us before. Sure, I will. And so, we, you know, passed everybody. The kids were, felt so special. We went to the front of the line. He had the two best tables for us. And right before we were getting ready to order, the manager of Disney Springs and our waiter came up and said, I just want y'all to know, you're on Mr. Art's VIP list and your lunch today will be taken care of.
Okay.
I told the kids, I told the kids, when they get rich and famous, remember that and pay it back to other children. So, thank you so much and we'll get out of your hair, all right?
Thank you so much.
So we're not quite out of your hair because two of my guys, Josh and Ian, come on up. Along with eight others in robotic design essentials and robotic systems have been competing this year at the VEX Spin-Up Challenge. We went in October for a practice one and then this past week, we had one on Thursday and one on Saturday. And on Saturday, these guys, first of all, they had to design and build a robot from scratch that would score points, different kinds of points on the field. It's a 12 by 12 foot field. One of the points is scored if you shoot the yellow foam disc that we just used underneath on the floor. You get five points if you can shoot it up into a, looks like a frisbee golf basket. So you have to shoot it out of your robot, up and score in there. You get 10 points if you can turn a roller to the correct color on the wall. There are four of those around. And then you get three points apiece for each one of those little squares that you saw down on the floor that your robot is touching in some way at the end of the two-minute challenge. So these guys came up with what they wanted to do. We set the, the class up, each, we have 10 that are working on this and each of them, each pair, had a certain part of the subsystem to work on for the robot. They did that in the fall. We got it put together and then they tweaked it between October and now. And on Saturday, they got to the semifinals of the competition, which nobody's ever done before from our high school team. And we got an email after the competition saying, congratulations, your team won the design award and they qualify for the regional tournament. So that's why I'm jumping, jumping in now because we had to do this this week.
Yes.
We go next month, but just very, very proud of these guys and what all they've accomplished. And I think they put us now, we kind of understand what it is we need to do. So every year, we ought to be, I think, holding the bar a little bit high.
We're on the map again.
Congratulations to these guys.
Thank you. We certainly want to thank them because we're on the map again for something besides football.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you all coming tonight.
Yeah, we will be talking, talked about now. I remember when we used to go to some school board meetings, they used to talk about us and say how we cheated and whatever, everything. When they redid the three eights and the, you remember one of them, you know what I'm talking about?
The classification.
Uh huh. And old days, they'd tell us about that. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
I'll see you soon, little girl. She know that answer when I say little girl, that's her little name.
That was a fun way to start our meeting tonight.
I call you grand girl. That's little girl.
Okay, we've got, let's go down to our agenda. We've got amendments to the agenda. We have two amendments. We'll put fingerprinting agreement under items for individual consideration. We'll make that 5.10, the fingerprinting agreement, 5.10. We've also got Madison redistricting options. We'll make that 5.11 under items for individual consideration. 5.10 fingerprinting agreement, 5.11 Madison redistricting options. At this point, will we adopt the agenda? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have a terrible that we have to adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a note, motion by Ms. Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, Becky 5.0. All right, public comment. Consent agenda items, 4.1, the minutes, 4.2 fundraisers, 4.3 Greenville Elementary School Valentine Dance. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Becky 5. Items for individual consideration, 5.1 memorandum of understanding with North Florida College. Ms. Joseph.
Okay, um, we need a reunification location in case of some incident, some incident happened and we have to remove the kids from the school at Madison County High School or Madison County Central School. And we have worked a no-cost agreement with North Florida College that we may use that site as the evacuation or reunification site without any cost. In the case of a natural disaster or something else, like device or something like that as well. And so, we just need this approved and they will sign. So we'll work that agreement again.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with North Florida College?
I move to approve the memorandum of the understanding with North Florida College.
We have a motion with Mr. Carroll, second.
Second.
Second with Ms. Vieta. Any discussion, questions?
I do appreciate them working with us on that.
Yes. I appreciate also, we have a good relationship with North Florida College. All those in favor? Becky 5.0. For, 5.2 personnel changes, Mr. Killingsworth?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, we have three instructional recommendations that I asked for your approval, one being at the high school, that's Ms. Yasmin Valencia. Then we'll have one at the central school, which is Ms. Hollingsworth, and then one at Pineeta, which will be Ms. Evans as far as instructional. And then we will have one non-instructional, which will be here at the district, and that's Ms. Crystal.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion approved, to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve the personnel changes.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson, second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Knight. Any discussion, questions? Thank you, Mr. Killingsworth.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, Becky 5.0. 5.3 volunteers, Mr. Killingsworth?
Yes, ma'am. We have 17 coming before you tonight that we ask that you approve for volunteers. If you won't, we have Ms. Herring and Ms. Taylor and Ms. Kelly. That first one is for Pineeta, the next two are for Lee. Ms. Stevens also for Lee. Mitchell is for Lee. Miller for Lee. Goins is for Lee. Serrano says Lee in the high school. Johnson, Central. Biddy, the high school. Both Combs for the high school and MCAA, mainly it's, it's for the FFA aspect of it. Mr. Peavy, Lane Peavy said he would at any school.
Okay.
That one is not a tickler. It can.
So let me just ask this question then, I know you're not finished, but if any of them wanted to, since we are proving them tonight, if any of them wanted to, they are approved for all schools?
Yes, ma'am. If, if you approve, I'm just, I'm just letting you know which, when they turned it in, what they were referring to. Now, in the future, if you don't want me to tell you, I mean, I, I just, but I'm just letting you know what it is. But yes, if, if, y'all bless them off, then they're good to go.
Miss Whiffle?
Yeah, Ms. Whiffle is at the high school and the academy, as well as Ms. Richardson. And the last two, Ms. McPherson, that's Deion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the D and that's what I was thinking. And Ms. Williams, both are for Lee. Both of those, I think you'll know for sure.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Killingsworth.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion to approve the volunteers?
Do we have a motion to approve the volunteers?
I move to approve the volunteers.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Knight. Any questions? I'm glad to see that we have so many volunteers. That's good.
Yes, ma'am. And I have, right now, 15 that will be coming before your next meeting, but since we just got them yesterday in the day, I try to honor y'all's requests and try not to slip anything in on you if I don't have to.
Thank you.
Right. Just for a point of information, Mr. Killingsworth, what is the process of becoming a volunteer, and what do you do?
Well, the volunteers, they're going to come in and turn the forms in, and they're able to go, they'll go on like trips or something, but they are always, there's a teacher always, somebody, now if they go on a field trip, they're going to be fingerprinted and stuff.
And they're going to be fingerprinted.
And now, you're going to, a little bit later, you're going to hear a question about the fingerprints.
Yes.
I need your help on that one as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have, do we have a motion to approve the volunteers?
I think we voted. We need to vote.
All those in favor, excuse me. Any opposed? Becky, 5.0.
Just for a point, for, to be a volunteer, you will go through the school site and get the form. They have the form at the school site.
So that's good to know. All right.
They turn them in up here.
Right. 5.4, request for additional hours, Mrs. Joseph. Thank you, Mr. Killingsworth.
We are asking for one of the math teachers at Central School to teach another class during his planning period. He's a certified math teacher, that's a critical shortage area, and that's a testing area. And the class that we were referencing did not have a certified math teacher, and we know that's part of the school grade. And so he's willing to give up his planning period to teach his extra class. And so that's, we're going to be paying for this out of ESSA. That's just one hour per day, not his whole salary. His salary comes out of general fund, but this extra hour will come from ESSA.
Thank you, Mrs. Joseph. Do we have a motion to approve the request for additional hours?
I move to approve the request for additional hours.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions?
No, but I appreciate him doing that, because I know it's been, been tough finding math teachers as it is.
It surely is. We're thankful for that. All those in favor? Opposed, Becky, 5.0. 5.5, staffing allocation plan, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, at your place where you're sitting, you'll see an additional staffing allocation manual. If you notice the one that we have posted, we posted the wrong one, and I gave it an And so I do not need you to vote on this, but this is some, just information, I just need you to know what's the status, because you've come here, we approved this earlier of 2022. And so I'm just trying to bring you up to date of where we are. These are the positions that have been approved for the school year. And so nothing has changed, this has been approved, and so it's for information only.
Just letting us know where we are right now.
Yes. Now, part two, I've got some other information. I want you to take one of these and pass it down. Pass all of them. Pass all that down. Yeah. No, one of them you.
I said pass all of them.
Okay.
I do what I'm told.
Three, four, five, six. Okay, another, I needed you to show you where we are and what funds we're paying for our school staff out of. That's what this sheet is, this last year I passed you. Okay, okay. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, this is the district staff and my fund as of today. Okay, where we paying for people, I listed it out by schools. And I'm going to go through the high schools, item by item, and then the other schools, basically the same thing. Our different categories that we use to spend money. We spend general fund, that's our basic money that we have. We have our Title I that pays for so many teachers, so many parents, and some other supplies and things. It doesn't necessarily, and the school personnel have some input onto how that money will be spent, okay? They are allocated funds according to their population and according to their poverty rate, okay? IDA, that says something that do with TSC, I can't tell you exactly what that is, okay? The read all is read allocation. That's a grant, that's an allocation that we have. Title IV, what's Title IV for, Ms. Hill?
For enrichment and STEM.
Okay, STEM. Okay. ARP is one of the, one of the extra monies that we were sending. Now, one of the things, you keep asking for a timeline. ARP, we will have those funds through September of 2024. That's what's on top. So that means the funds we will have in this year and all of next school year, the next one at ESSA, those funds, we've got to have them spent by September of 2023. So that means this year, next school year, we probably don't want anything in that category. And so we've got how many teachers we have at the school and the different funds they're being paid for. We've got how many parents are at the school and the different funds they're being paid for, okay? Secretaries, clerks, bookkeepers, custodians. And I have lunchroom, but I've got a note beneath the lunchroom. All the cafeteria workers are paid out of the food service fund, so it's not coming out of either one of these funds. And our staffing for that is based upon, if you look, read through the staffing allocation plan, it'll help guide us how many people we need in each category, okay? Another concern that you are having, we don't want to overload our staff with ESSA or ARP because at any of those grants, those positions, not those people, those positions will not be renewed, and are we going to be able to fund them? And so with that in mind, we know the ESSA, next year, we won't have that. So that's going to be six positions that we are going to eliminate. That's not necessarily people, okay? Because we have people retire, we have people move and different attritions, so, but those six positions will not exist anymore after this year, okay? The following year, we've got ARP, we're going to have those for another year, and that's going to be six and a half positions that won't exist. And so that's one of the reasons we are going to be having to tighten our belt and function, make sure these schools function basically as they are. And some positions, we will not be able to fund unless some other funds come up. Another thing, at Greenville, they have TISA funds, you'll see that from the Greenville, that's part of their, the Bureau of School Improvement, that's some funds that went just to Greenville. And when we get these other extra grants, extra money, we try not to fill it up with personnel, because we know when the grants leave, the personnel, that position will have to leave, and we don't want to become super dependent upon them. The BPK will be there. We've got BPK at Pinetta, and we've got BPK at Lee. Those will be there. At Central School, we've got UNICEF. Okay? UNICEF, that's because of, that's through the Bureau of School Improvement, and that's some funds that they received, and that's what they chose to do with some of their funds. The Title IV up at high school, that's only for the high school. And when we write that grant, they write in one position. Now, you don't need to vote on this. This is just basically looking at where we have staff and how we're funding them. Any questions about this?
I don't have a question about this, but I'm keeping in mind those positions, I didn't say people, positions that are on grants right now, that are going to expire. At the end, you said, I think, two years, right?
Okay, at the end of this year, we'll have six positions expiring.
Okay.
Okay?
With this, but there's 37 other positions that we, I have it in my notebook over there that are through grants.
Yes, there's 36 positions.
Thirty-six, 37 positions.
But we're not talking about all the positions, we're talking about a certain.
I think he may come every year. That's an entitlement to get there every year. Title I, we get here every year.
Right, yep.
Those aren't, those aren't.
We have reoccurring.
Are, are the ones that they can roll out.
Right. We only concerned about, are we concerned about all of these two right here? We know at the end of this year, these ESSA positions, they will evaporate.
That money's going.
So that's only six, okay? And then the next year for the ARP, we know those positions are leaving. Now, we've got certain other grants, like Ms. Hill was saying, those grants are reoccurring.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm trying to put it out to you, in front of you, about what we have.
Well, no, I appreciate that, and we need to have it in the forefront. There's no doubt about it. It's just that I want to keep everything in the fore, you know? In other words, we don't want to forget about, okay, going back to those grants, for instance. I mean, they're going to end, you know, because the money doesn't continue to, you know? So when the money ends, unless we can use the people, like if a teacher retires, you put a teacher in that position, you know, that's good. Just keeping things on the surface, let's put it that way.
Yes.
Just, that's all I'm doing. Any other questions?
So I'm seeing that two of these positions are.
Which school?
Teachers at MCHS.
Yes.
I don't think we can live without teachers. So, I mean, so are we talking that they're going to be paid out of a different funding source?
Not necessarily. These are not classroom teachers that's being paid. They're teachers paid as a teacher, but they're not classroom teachers. If we don't have anything, we've got to have a teacher in front of the students, okay? These other, we would love to have, but if we don't have a fund for them, they won't exist.
But we're showing them teachers anyway, so we'll be keeping those teachers.
I was just going to say, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
And we'll be keeping them.
Yeah. I mean, teacher retention needs to be at the most important thing that we're focused on, you know?
We will be keeping those.
And getting this budget under control so that we can take care of these teachers the way they need to be taken care of.
These are not, the two at the high school are not classroom teachers.
Okay, so they're not instructional.
But they can teach.
They may be instructional, but they might not be in a classroom.
Right, right, right. But I guess what her question is, is with these two positions going away, are we going to have, you know, are we going to have a gap? You know, we're already short, are we losing two teachers?
They are not in front of the students. These two people are not in front of the students at all.
But if they have certificates and other positions become open, then I'm sure we would consider those.
They can be shifted, yes.
You got a hand, Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Killingsworth.
And also, something that we need to harmonize when we're looking at the number of teachers, it's not a stagnant number forever. So if it's, you know, we'll say 32 for our site right now, it's not going to be 32 for the next 20 years. Each year, we have to look at, based on the number of students allocated. So as they go up and down, your number of teachers are going to go up and down. So when we look at this next step to you, Linda, then we'll start comparing for the up and down.
And when we have problems like this, we always workshop them, and we can't workshop them in a regular meeting. So we'll workshop this if this should come up.
That's a good point, Mr. Killingsworth, because the, you know, and our population is not really what you call been increasing, so we have to adjust, for sure. All right. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph, for that information. Any other questions? All right. 5.6, staff travel, Ms. Josephs.
Okay, I have two trips I'm presenting to you. One is for Ms. Kayla Jenkins, due to some kind of professional training during the summer for 72 hours on animal science course. Okay, this is going to be approximately $4,000, but it's being paid for out of ESSA Dual Aromene Grant. And so, yes, that's a biggie, but it's something that will enhance her program, and we've got funds, other than general funds, and remember, this is, this is expiring this, in September this year, okay? We've got another trip request from Mr. Patrick White, who is the person in charge of the Bridge Program, and he wants to go to an innovative school summit in Orlando. And I think it will help him with the population of school, of students that he serves, and we're paying for this out of Title II.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Do we have a motion to approve the staff travel?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the staff travel as requested.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Ms. Knight, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan. Any questions? All in favor, raise your hands. Opposed, Becky, 5.0.
Y'all cool.
Ms. Lou?
I was asking a bit about Ms. Cole.
Ms. Lou, chill. 5.7, controlled open enrollment plan, Ms. Hill?
We just need to, okay, so this is definitely.
Did you want to do any explanation?
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be nice. Just a little explanation. For those sitting at home.
We are looking at our controlled open enrollment because it needs to be updated. That's one of those things that each, each year, we're supposed to bring back to the board to look at. And so there are some procedures there that we needed to update. And so controlled open enrollment is where a parent can request that their student go to a different school if there is room. And what that means, when I say that there's room, it means that the class is not over 90, at 90% capacity. And that is based off of the FIS report, not necessarily just the physical numbers in the class. And so we needed to update this so that our procedures follow our policy. We do have students that are attending different schools in the county through controlled open enrollment. They have, our policy says that we have until March, you remember the date, Ms. Becky? It's in March until the last day of school. I think so, too.
Okay, but what is the, what is the verbiage, you know, that was changed in here or needed to be amended? That would be more helpful for us, you know, to know we went from this to this, you want us to approve it, but we don't know what the change is.
We didn't have any of this.
Okay, so there was nothing before.
Right.
That helps, thank you. That helps make it easier for us.
Yeah. So basically, they can go within the, they can also leave the county. We also know that.
That is correct.
Now, we don't provide transportation if they leave the county, but they're able to go to a different school within the county if, if there's, if it's, if the population warrants that, let's put it that way.
That's correct.
And it's all, from my reading of it, it's all about choice, too. Giving the parents choice, giving them an opportunity to choose which school, which would be the best fit for their child.
Right. And right now, we have students who, you know, live in Madison, who go to Lee and Pinetta, Greenville. We have some who live in Greenville that come to Central. We have some that live in Lee, they go to Pinetta. Every school in our district has students that come to it from another school zone through open enrollment.
Are they, are they, are they us?
No, they have to provide their own transportation.
But I'm questioning real quick. It's saying, now, does, there are exceptions to the room if there are certain circumstances, correct? Like, it's saying, you know, if you have a sibling that is in an. Like, it's, it's saying that, you know, if you have a sibling that is in an ESE program, so you can have, you can go over, okay?
Yes.
There are exceptions.
You can go over that ninety percent capacity, um, under the circumstances that are listed there. That's kind of, they're kind of rare, but it does, it does happen.
Let's, Robin, also tell them, you know, maybe one or two slots we save for children who are moving in the district.
Right, that's why it's at ninety percent capacity, is because we have to leave space for students who move in, um, to that school zone.
Now, you mentioned they're not providing transportation.
That's correct.
Never.
Within the county.
Right, within or without.
Okay.
Never.
Okay, that's, just to clarify that.
Right. Now, there, there are, you know, opportunity scholarships that would, um, where we would have to provide transportation, but that's a completely different.
That's a different scenario.
Scenario.
Okay, very good. All right, um, thank you, Ms. Hill, for that information. Do we have a motion to approve the controlled open enrollment plan?
I move to approve the controlled open enrollment plan.
We have a motion by Ms. Thompson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, Becky five zero. Five point eight, lease query subscription agreement.
Okay.
Ms. Joseph?
Madam Chair, what this is about, this is a IRS requirement. Let's start off with that, okay? And what it is, the government, the accounting framework says no, okay? We used to amortize only depreciate. We could only appreciate something that we owned, okay? We do not own things that we lease, for example, um, Skyward. We've got a multi-year contract with Skyward. If you have a multi-year contract with, with an entity leased, you still have to treat it like you bought it, you own it, you have to amortize it, you have to depreciate it. And this company does that for us because it's some kind of fancy stuff. We don't know how to do it, and it's not, okay? But it's required, that's what this is.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Do we have a motion to approve the lease query subscription agreement?
I move to approve the lease query subscription agreement.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Knight, was it? Ms. Thompson?
Ms. Knight.
Ms. Knight. Any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Becky five zero. Five point nine, contract with Diamond Jones for mental health services, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, well, this is, uh, the mental health council we had, uh, left, and that position is open. And we are short on counsel, we need some counsel. This is someone that has her credentials and that, uh, we would like to put in that position from now until the end of the year. One thing that needs to be changed on the contract, it's not, this contract is not started in January ninth, okay? We're gonna start it as of tonight, after, as, as of when you approve it.
February the, February the.
Okay.
Sixth.
Okay.
All right.
Through the end of the school year.
Through the end of the school year?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
And that's just a position, it's not any new money that we had, uh, we were using and the person left, and we just wanted to be.
Okay, replacing the person. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract with Diamond Jones, Jones for mental health services?
I move to approve the contract with Diamond Jones for mental health services.
We have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have questions on this one. So, uh, mental health is something that I'm, I'm very passionate about, and it is a necessity for the, the kids in the schools. Is this the only candidate that we had? She is licensed, she is certified, she's gonna be able to provide these services to the kids? Those are my, you know, like.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, Becky five zero. Five point ten, fingerprinting agreement.
Mr. Killingsworth is gonna speak on that.
Mr. Killingsworth?
The short version, uh, for the fingerprinting machine or contract is, we, we previously had a.
In-house printing system.
In-house printing system where we actually did the fingerprints here and all that. However, you know, as the state adjusts their rules from year to year, either the state chose, or this company chose, to, uh, sever that, that relationship. Short version is, as of the end of January, that company said, we are not doing anymore in the state of Florida. So you remember I was up here earlier saying I might need a little help with some fingerprinting stuff, see that we got to do it? We've looked, this pretty much is the same rate. The short version of what's gonna happen now, instead of them coming here to do their fingerprints, they'll go uptown to the, the packing store, the melon packing store. Make sure I get that one right. And, uh, they will do it, we will give them a code. And what will happen is they will send it off just like if we did it ourselves, and the information comes back to us. So we still will retain, you know, if we got your fingerprints and you go out and do something, it's gonna ping us back, and I'm gonna know about it.
So how does this process work, though? Since that company is not doing it again, um, someone here at the county office would, would get the little thing and do the little fingerprint, the little rolling and pad and stuff here?
We did in the past.
That's okay.
But the person that actually will roll the fingers now will be the.
Oh, so it's down there, down to that place?
Yes, ma'am, it's actually established.
Okay, so they know what they're doing?
Yes, ma'am, and they are a provider and a vendor for this particular company.
Okay.
And they will do it.
And that company is taking care of the expense?
Well, I mean, they're still gonna charge us like they've all, I mean, we're still gonna pay.
They're not charging us, they're, they're gonna charge the person directly. The money will not be coming through our hands at all.
What I'm saying is, who will be paying the expense? That person who's being fingerprinted?
The person.
Or to the board or what?
Well, like, uh, like the three people I, or the four people I asked earlier that recommending you to, to hire, they would go up there. They would pay the amount that needs to be, that they say they have to do, because you have to pay that before they'll even do it. And then they'll send it off. And pretty much, when you do your fingerprints, by the time you walk back to the car, it will have already hit, and we will already know.
Oh.
So, uh, now, if for some reason your fingerprints kind of drug and they didn't take well, we'll get an email back to saying, hey, you need to send so-and-so back because that didn't work. But, uh, it really is a good. It, it will be a great thing for both of us.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Killingsworth, for that information. Now, let me go back a long time ago. What do, when we used to, we used to do it right here, and, and what did they do with the fingerprints? I mean, was that sent off someplace or?
You're talking about the, where you roll them in the ink?
Yes, when you roll them in ink, uh-huh.
Uh, yes, that was the old card way, and you had to send that off.
You had to, and then you waited until.
Because you had no choice, and a lot of times you would go up to the courthouse or whatever, and they would do it, uh, from the sheriff's department stuff.
Yeah.
But now, they have the little machine, and you just roll your fingers, and then they have your fingerprints forever.
Okay, well, thank you for that information.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve this?
Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the fingerprint contract.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight to approve the diamond, fingerprinting agreement, second.
I second the motion.
Second by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor? Opposed, Becky five zero. Five point eleven, redistricting, Madison County redistricting options.
Mr. Reeves is gonna talk about that.
Okay. Madam Chair, so I, I'd sent out an email to everyone. As you recall, the county and the school board agreed to hire a contractor to look at the population in our districts. It's actually, back up a step further. The Board of County Commissioners has to set districts for the Board, the County Commissioner districts, and this board, the school board, has to set the districts for the school board member districts. Now, in small counties like Madison, uh, almost always, they, those two bodies choose to set the exact same districts, and then it's, uh, you save money and you split the cost of the contractor, et cetera. If you're in a big deal county like a Orange County or something, those districts may not have anything to do with one another. But in small counties, we tend to do it that way, although y'all are not required to do it. Before, uh, the end of last year, the county and the school board agreed to hire contractors, split the cost, and to look at our, uh, Board of County Commissioner districts and school board member districts. Those districts had been set in nineteen eighty-four, was the last time they had been set, and they had never been, we'd never hired anybody to look at them, et cetera. We're supposed to look at them after each census, uh, but for whatever reason, that had not been done. So we hired, uh, so my advice, my recommendation to you all in the Board of County Commissioners, was that we needed to, uh, retain a contractor to look at it and see, had the population, uh, shifted in those districts? Did we need to, uh, revamp those? So, uh, that contractor gave a report, and it was attached to the email that we sent, it looks like this. And so, uh, what the contractor had, uh, had put out was that now, uh, the population is sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty, and then it broke that population down to about it by five. So an ideal district, uh, would be three thousand, three hundred and thirty-six people. Then it looked at the actual population in all the districts, and it found that there was a pretty wide, uh, uh, distance between those. For instance, District Five had thirty-five point nine one percent more than the ideal. District Three had twenty-two point five one percent less than the ideal. So what that mean, and that's not surprising, I mean, we're talking about, what, twenty-six, twenty-seven years of difference? But, so that's a pretty big spread. Now, you're not required to have it all exactly even, but what the courts say is that about a ten percent difference between highest and lowest is what they will allow, right? So what that means is, we are gonna need to redistrict. And now, and, and also, another, um, sheet that I put into the email was this sheet, and this is from the federal civil rights cases back in nineteen eighty-four. And this is the way it was broken out in nineteen eighty-four. And it has the totals of the districts, and it also has, uh, registered voters in the district, and it breaks it out by race. So in nineteen eighty-four, what, the, the way it was set up was District, um, let's see, it was District Three and Four were set up to be what are called majority-minority districts. So, uh, that was, uh, in our case, in Madison's case, that would be a majority African-American, uh, the voters in those districts. Now, the reason you have two of these tables, right? The first table is total population, and what they have here, they've called it registered voters, but it, it's really not registered voters, it's voting age population. So, and when you're trying to, uh, district just based on numbers of people, you count everybody, you count babies, you count hundred-year-old people, everything. If you're talking about, uh, for, uh, uh, racial purposes and all that, you look at voting age population, and that's why you have the two, um, tables there. So, um, what we're going to end up having to do is, we're gonna end up having to shift some lines, and becau- because we want to accomplish two things. Number one is, we want to make all the districts about the same or as close as we can population-wise. And then number two, we want to try to ensure that you keep two majority-minority districts, right? And so, we gotta try to accomplish both those things. Now, uh, with Mr. Spencer is the, um, is the, uh, contractor. And so, what they have is, they take all of the census data, they load it into the computer, it shows where everybody lives, and then he can, he can adjust lines and all that to see what the numbers come up. What, what I think we need to do, and my recommendation to the board, um, oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing. We're, we're trying to accomplish these two things about the population and the majority-minority districts, but we're also trying to do it in such a way that Supervisor of Election can reasonably conduct elections. You gotta have, you, you want to keep the, um, the, the districts consolidated with certain voting places and all that. So, my recommendation is, um, and I'll be making the same recommendation to Board of County Commissioners, is to let me and Mr. Spencer and the Supervisor of Election get together, run some different scenarios, bring you all back some options. And I think at that point, once we have some options, let's set up a joint meeting with the school board and the Board of County Commissioners, and y'all can talk about it, we'll present it, the public can look at it, and you can see. Now, and when I say options, I don't mean, we're gonna give you one, two, and three, and you have to pick one of those three. But what I want you to do is, I want you to get a few options where you can see kind of how it's done, and then you all, and the Board of County Commissioners, and the public, can say, well, you know what, Reeves? We like this over here, but we don't like that part, and, you know, move this, and all those kinds of things. But I think it, it's not gonna be productive if we're just all sitting around a table looking at each other. You gotta have a couple of plans in place to, to kind of start, i- is what I'm, is what I'm thinking. And, um, so if that's okay, that's what I would, uh, recommend to the board. And then let us bring you back a few plans, we'll set up a joint meeting, a public, uh, workshop. And, and now I am anticipating, um, and, and of course, the school board and the Board of County Commissioners, y'all can do it how you want to. I'm anticipating, though, we're probably gonna need to have several, um, workshops, public meetings, and then now the final product will be something that you.
I, I think that'd be the best thing, don't you?
Okay, February twenty-first, March eighth, and March ninth. I don't know which day, but I will give her, uh, three days to choose from.
Okay. Because we're also out the whole week of March thirteenth through the seventeenth in Tallahassee, too, so we'll put that for one week.
Okay, thank you for that. The next thing, I would like to, uh, congratulate Bobby Pinkett, who's being chosen as the district teacher of the year, and she is a teacher at Panetta Elementary School. A couple of other things at your desk, you've got a potential sponsor request, and this is a personal thing, from the track coach at Madison County High School, he's soliciting funds. You look on the back, if you would like to make a donation, all the information is there for you. Another thing is that, um, a parent from Lee had contacted each of the board members and, um, was had, was questioning us about AP Penn, training all the staff for AP Penns. The head nurse, Anna Dyke, sent this response to us, okay?
Is it responsive?
No, I've got one other thing, I've been having a lot of questions about this. This past week, we have some teachers and administrators receive, uh, a bonus check.
Correct.
That's because they work at the Bureau of BSI Schools, Schools in Needs of Improvement, okay? And this is a letter from the person at the department. This money did not come out of our fund. The state sent us money specifically to give to these people. The state computed who would and who would not receive these funds. But, um, I know for Greenville, Mr. Killingsworth sent out an email soliciting people to work and told them, if you qualify, if you chose to work out there, you would be getting seven extra thousand dollars per year, okay? And so, that was given with across board, uh, district-wide. I had to beg somebody to go out there, okay? We did not come up with the qualifications or the requirements, the state come up with it, and the state looked at their records, and the state, uh, chose who got what. And so, this is the specific of what was done. Question, comments?
Well, if they're not satisfied, then they should probably contact someone at the state, right? I mean, if, in other words, if it's out of our hands.
It's out of our hands, we did not, uh.
I, I don't know what else we can say, other than.
Okay.
Well, my question that I had earlier today was just about, you know, the integrity of the data, you know, that was being provided, and, you know, that's why I asked for this information. You know, because I just want to make sure, if we're providing that data, that we're verifying that information before it's being provided to the state, you know? And so, at this point, you know, I don't want these teachers to feel like they're not being heard, so, you know, we, if we need to reach out to the state representative, you know, just to, for clarification and verification, then, you know, we want to make sure that they feel like they're appreciated and they're heard, and that we are, you know, here.
The state own the data, all we did is we submitted names, okay, the state own the data.
Yeah.
These teachers know everything that goes on, and a lot of them want to complain. Of course, we appreciate all our teachers.
Of course, we appreciate all our teachers and stuff, but it's going to be aggravators and everything.
No, I understand that.
And in everything that comes up, it's going to be aggravators in it.
But we are a short staff, we need to make sure that, you know, we-
But this is not about short staff, this is about money.
It's about retention. It is about money, but if these teachers feel like they're not getting, if they're not getting what they're deserved-
You can't get something that you haven't earned.
And that's, that's perfectly fine.
And you really need to earn it, and all of them knew about this program.
But if they feel like they earned it, they should be able to go to somebody to prove that they feel like they earned it. If that's not the district, then we're going to direct them to the state.
Did they have the qualifications, did they have the criteria?
It doesn't matter, at the end of the day, if they feel like they need to be heard, and it's the state that's going to handle it, we're going to direct them to the state, let the state help them.
I'm not seeking, and I'm not talking about not being heard. Everybody needs to be heard. I'm talking about, you're saying, the integrity of the data. Okay, when this program was out, all teachers knew about it. They could have-
Absolutely, I agree.
They could have. But now, when money is involved, and they want to question the money, that's all I'm saying.
Well, this isn't only teachers that went to Greenville, this is teachers that have been at Central, and, you know, they have the scores, and there's some discrepancies-
But it's in a particular year.
There are discrepancies, because I came early and met with, with Ms. Barbara Thomas, and she couldn't explain some of the discrepancies to me.
Why are you meeting with Ms. Barbara Thomas?
Because she's the one that-
You're supposed to meet with the superintendent. The superintendent is Ms. Barbara Thompson, direct boss, we are nobody's boss that we got to meet with.
I'm not, I didn't go in as her boss, I go in requesting information from her.
But you're a school board member, you can't do that.
I understand, I'm a public, I'm a member of the public, I can request public information just like anybody else.
Well, do we, is there someone that can make some clarification, maybe? Is that what we need? I'm not sure what you're-
We, we've reached out to a state representative, because at the end of the day, we have, it's-
We who?
The, myself.
Concerned.
I have asked, and the information was taken from the state, so therefore, we're taking it to the state.
These teachers are our constituents, just like everybody else. We represent them, we represent the staff, we represent the students.
Do you understand, do you understand the difference between union-
Absolutely.
And the union is supposed to represent them. When you go in, now, you're union bustin', and, you know, of course, the union would appreciate that, but then, on the other side, it's not going to be appreciated. Listen, learn, research before you go in, because that, and I'm thinking, I've served fourteen years, and I know that you're a public person, too, and I don't know, this is coming off the top of my head, well, not the top of my head, what I've learned with the previous fourteen years. You have to be careful with what we do as a school board member, and what we do as a community member. And, you know, I don't know, but then, I do know that when it's concerning the schools, that the superintendent is the direct boss, we are nobody's boss. The school board members are in charge of policy and procedure.
I understand that.
And when we do have a policy and procedure, then, you know, those are mainly our duties, policy and procedure.
I have not said that I'm anybody's boss, I'm not-
Well, I'm not sure exactly where you're coming from, but-
When you went and questioned Ms. Barbara, she didn't know whether she had to answer or not, because you are a school board member, and a lot of people don't know the difference in our duties and responsibilities. Maybe Ms. Barbara was afraid, and then, if she said she couldn't explain it, whatever, she shouldn't have been talking to you at all, but then, since you're a school board member, maybe she felt she had to talk to you.
All I asked was for information to be provided to me, that she had-
And she should have directed you straight to the superintendent.
Okay, yes, you're right. Now, we do, when someone comes to us, whether it be an employee, or a teacher, or someone on the street, we go directly to the superintendent. That, that's protocol.
I came in this morning to see the superintendent, she was in a meeting, so I gave my request to her specifically.
We discuss problems always with the superintendent, because she is the CEO of the whole operation.
She's these people's boss, we are not their boss.
Yes, she's, she's in charge, and I'm not sure where you're coming from, but unless you can discuss it with, outside of the meeting, with Mrs. Joseph.
We, there's nothing else that, for me personally, that you can discuss. My, I requested information from Ms. Bishop this morning, it was provided with me, I have exactly what I needed, I just wanted to know if the information was provided by the district, or if it was provided by the state. I got those answers.
Oh, you got the answers?
Okay, well, then, maybe-
And so, it was provided by the state?
It was, that's, it was provided by the state, is what I was thinking, which is why I had informed, to go to the state. You know, it's out of the district's hand.
So, you have-
But that's correct.
You have the answers to your questions, then? And hopefully, the employees will understand, you know, what's going on here.
Well, I think that part of the problem with the employees not understanding is just a little bit of lack of communication and a little bit of transparency. And I agree that a lot of these teachers have been given opportunity, and they had the opportunity to dispute their evaluations and all of that stuff. I do understand that, and I respect, when I came this morning, I didn't want this to be a surprise to Shirley, that's why I came this morning. You know, at the end of the day, sometimes, just getting out in front of these situations avoids a lot of the phone calls and things that happen unnecessarily. If an email had gone out and simply said, you know, UNISIC bonuses are coming out, this is the qualifications to receive this bonus, and you either qualify or you don't, then we wouldn't be getting all these phone calls about, you know, why didn't I get a bonus? Here's qualifications in black and white, you didn't qualify for it, that's why you didn't get it.
So, so in other words, we-
But they should know that anyway.
You're saying that they didn't know the qualifications, then?
But a lot of them do not understand the qualifications, and a lot of them don't know what the qualifications are.
Okay, well, let me ask Ms. Hill or Ms. Joseph, how would they know, or do they, were they supposed to have known the qualifications? Okay. In other words, I guess if I was interested in getting money, I probably would have found out the qualifications.
When it comes out, and you're asking for these positions to be filled, then, if you're not interested, you don't ask no questions.
Yeah, but some of the teachers are already in positions that could qualify.
Yes, absolutely, some of the teachers that received it.
They're already in positions that make them eligible for that, and that's where the discrepancy came in.
Yes, these are veteran teachers that we are not showing, we appreciate you with raises.
Well, and it's not that we are not-
And they're getting ready to walk out the door.
Y'all have to understand, this is not a raise.
It's not we, it's not we.
The other's difference between a raise and a less.
When you have, when, when we're getting phone calls from veteran teachers that are ready to find a job elsewhere, then there's a huge concern. So, that's all, I mean, I've, I've been getting phone calls.
Well, I get phone calls every day, five and six, and whatever.
Yes, we get phone calls, and let me say something. There's not a person, and if there is, it's sad, that runs for this office, that is not interested in their employees and the children.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, let's not, let's get that straight. All of us here were elected to this position because we're interested.
No, I agree.
We want to pay our employees, keeping an eye on the money, you know, this is what we're, and so, in other words, it's, we're not the enemy up here.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Let's not portray us to be the enemy.
No, that is not my intent.
We are working together. We are working together.
And if we need to have workshops about this, we need to have workshops. And it's not your duty, not your responsibility to respond to these people without going through the superintendent first. If you've not spoken to the superintendent, she's, whatever, but we need to have some workshops about all this stuff.
Well, that's, that's a process.
And I mean, I'm a new, I'm new here again, I've done fourteen years, was out four years, the previous four years, the things that were going on, I do not know, but then, my experience from those other fourteen years, nothing has really changed, and I keep up with the other legislative stuff and whatever, my tongue tied on it, and the political clinic and stuff, and I do try to keep up with that, and I read, and I research, sometime I act stupid, but believe me, I'm not stupid.
But, um, let me ask you-
We got to get our job duties and responsibilities are in line of what we're supposed to, and what we're not supposed to do, and you're going to work yourself to the bone and burn out.
And that's okay, that's, that's what, that's what I was elected to do.
If that's what we choose to do, that's all right.
I mean, that's, exactly.
Let me go back to Ms. Joseph and let her, Ms. Joseph, do you have something else to say?
Yeah, but that's the difference between us.
Okay.
I thought this was stuff expensive.
Well, you can give it back free, you can donate it.
I thought so, too, but I- Okay. Mr. Reeves?
Madam Chair.
You have nothing to say?
No, I don't think.
All right. Ms. Knight?
I just want to say, you know, to the teachers that did receive the bonus, congratulations to the ones that did not, you know, do your due diligence, and, you know, just, you know, check the qualifications, and, you know, contact the state, you know, we can only do so much here at the district. And I also want to congratulate our district teacher of the year. She is an amazing teacher, and we are blessed to have her. I would also like to thank the schools that came and did presentation this morning, it was wonderful to have them, and I also want to just acknowledge the wonderful job that the culinary program did. The wonderful job that the culinary program did at the teacher of the year banquet, they did a phenomenal job, not only helping prepare the food, but serving it, and just waiting on the staff, and they just, they really did an outstanding job. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you to Greenville Elementary School for their presentation, they did a wonderful job. Thank you to the Beta Club and the teachers that attended with them, they also did an amazing job with their presentations. Congratulations to our district teacher of the year, Ms. Bobby Pinkert. It was a wonderful night celebrating at the banquet, and I hope you all have a wonderful rest of the afternoon and week.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Carroll?
Well, I'd like to thank Greenville and the students and their faculty for their presentation. The Beta Club, you know, we so proud of all of those, I was, you know, I'm impressed with all of them, but that, that-
Robot.
Robot thing, that's unbelievable to me, but I appreciate them fellows. And the teacher of the year, Ms. Bobby Pinkert, appreciate her, and all of Pineada, well, all the teachers of the year, that was the first one I had been to, it was really good, I really enjoyed it. I want to thank Ms. Bell, and the lunchroom staff for that, for that meal.
It was delicious.
I wanted to go back, but it wasn't that, but anyway, it was, it was really good, really good. I hadn't ate one of them rolls since I got out of high school.
Okay, we do not serve those rolls during regular lunch, we only serve wheat rolls during regular lunch.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all need to go back to serving them, but anyway, that, that was really good, and I appreciate them. And the culinary students, they did a great job, just like, just like I said.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Ms. Hagan?
This particular night, I missed, the previous fourteen years that I've served on the board, I've attended every one of these banquets, but this particular night, I couldn't get there, but they received a reward from me, okay? Now, as I said the last time, when we had these students to present, Madison County should be proud, and I will say it again, we're going to be proud of something else besides football. Now, we will be proud of our academics, and football can fall in there wherever it wants to, because it's an extracurricular activity. And from what they presented tonight, we will be on the map, and I want to thank these parents and these teachers for putting us on the map. And when we look up again, we'll be looking up at these fellows' faces, they're going to be famous, and make lots of money, and represent Madison County. And just want to thank everybody for everything that we've done, and I'm not fussing at anybody or anything. But anyway, we all are here to work together, and, you know, don't want you to get burned out so fast and so quick, and honestly, it will burn you out, because I have calls every day, morning, noon, and night, and they will call me, I had to stop them from calling me late at night, it got me so bad, that I says, you're going to have to call the person in your school board district, and that's what I make a lot of them do, now, call in their school board district, but still, they want to talk to you and tell you about it and whatever and everything, and we do a good job. Yes, as a board, we do do a good job, and we do want to represent the parents, we want to represent the students, and we want to do what we can, and we also want to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. I'd like to thank the Greenville Elementary School, as well as the Beta Club, also the teachers, Ms. Bridges and Mrs. Griffin. The Beta Club represented us very well in Orlando, and of course, by that, on that note, they're going to be going to Louisville, Kentucky, this June State Convention. On January eighteenth to the twentieth, I attended the FIBIT Winter Meeting in Orlando. That's, FIBIT stands for Florida School Board Insurance Trust. I want to give you just a brief description, because when I first came on the board, a lot of things were talked about, and I thought, what, you know, I wasn't, even though I was in the education, teaching, but just to, so you, no, just, this was something that showed up down there, I thought, this sort of explains it. Florida School Board Association established the Florida School Board Insurance Trust, the FIBIT, in nineteen eighty-one, for the purpose of self-insuring the property, casualty, and workers' compensation exposure of Florida school districts. This pooled self-insurance program is sponsored by the Florida School Board Association, and is funded by the school districts that join the trust. Currently, there are thirteen school districts that belong to the trust. The trust is governed by trustees, which I'm one of them, and the program administration in the responsibility of FIBIT's executive director. FIBIT provides insurance, claims processing, administrative, safety and loss control, and risk management, and administrative services. Scott Blazer, the Director of Insurance Operation, will be present at our March twentieth board meeting to give a presentation. He'll be, he'll, he'll kind of make it more personal for us. On February first, I participated in the 2023 Madison County Delegation Meeting. State Representative Allison Taint, along with the State Senator Cory Simon, were present. I addressed the representative and the senator regarding underfunded state mandates, not unfunded, but underfunded, such as resource officers, class size reduction, transportation, and I hit on truancy a bit. There was an overflowing crowd in attendance. On February second, I had the pleasure of attending the Golden Apple Recognition Banquet, sponsored by the Madison County Foundation for Excellence in Education. Bobby Pinkert was selected as the Madison County District Teacher of the Year, and it was a well-deserved honor. I also appreciate the culinary students who did a fantastic job. Congrats to Bobby and all those who are recognized, and we appreciate all who had, all who, all of our working, all of our teachers, hard-working teachers. I'd like to thank the foundation for this beautiful event. During the month of January and on to February, I had the opportunity to visit several schools, whether it be to present an enrichment lesson, or attend an awards ceremony, or just touch base with our beautiful schools. Thank you all for what you do each and every day. I look forward to the school resource, school resource person, school-related person luncheon on February ninth. Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Before you close, school related, SRP luncheon is going to be this Thursday at twelve o'clock at Madison County High School, go to the front office, and they will direct you to the culinary department where the lunch will be served. Have y'all received an invitation?
Katie and I will be out of town in Orlando.
You have, you miss. I haven't either. I'll talk with her tomorrow.
When you say?
Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Twelve o'clock. Okay.
We'll be at the finance.
I will, no, you should have received the invitation regardless, but I will take care of that tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll, all in favor? Opposed? Becky, five seconds.